Start this meeting.
Okay, let's call to order the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five Foxfire Village Council work session. Any changes to the agenda?
The only thing I had is, and we don't need to talk about it today, but I think everybody should have got a copy of the proposed cross-connection ordinance. Mary?
I think you and I got a little more work to do on it, though, to be honest.
Okay, because I have revised it. I want to thank Mary's favor. She streamlined it. I remember the last work session, it was kind of a...
Hold on a second. Let me just add you to DJ.
Okay.
Any other changes? Okay, I have to, I want to add a West End Fire Department update on the contract. Can I have a vote? And are there any changes?
No.
I make a motion to accept the changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm being, I guess I'm first on the agenda. Bamboo removal update. Okay. Could you pass that down? The bamboo is removed, but what's been discovered is that there's a, the property is, I guess they had to dig down a little deeper to get all the roots. So, there is a rather large dip in the middle. So, there are two, I talked with, I talked with Garrett Hill, but that's the people, he's farm management. Anyway, he's the one who did our fencing. There are two options that we, I would like to propose. We need to get some fill for the area. Now, if we do like a ten-foot section, which isn't the whole, it's just a ten-foot section from where they dug up out to ten feet, right?
Out to the grass that's already there.
Right. It's about four truckloads of fill. And it's two hundred and fifty dollars a truckload. And he got multiple quotes while I was standing there, and this was the cheapest one. And if we go with that, we're looking at seventeen fifty added to the project. That'll give us at least a ten-foot section that we could mow and keep the bamboo at bay. We can spray the remainder of the property and maybe future years we can fill it in a little bit more as time goes on. Now, to fill in that area so that we could mow most of that area would be ten truckloads of fill, which obviously would be twenty-five hundred dollars with fifteen hundred dollars for moving the dirt around. And that would be a four thousand dollar project. So, I have two proposals. I think we have to do at least option one.
Sure.
But if anyone thinks we should, you know, just get it all done now.
What are the consequences of not getting it done? I mean, if we're gonna pay more later, I mean...
Well, you're gonna pay more later anyway, so...
Why would we do that?
Well, I'm just saying you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay this amount later if we don't do it now.
I mean, what, I just, I'd like to fill it in.
Well, to mow it, well, see, if you don't, if you don't mow...
But it always has, right?
Well, it looks like they had to dig down more than what the original biography was.
They took dirt out?
Well, roots. They took all the roots out.
But we're not, the lot is just an empty lot, right? That we have no purpose for, right?
Right. It's too uneven to mow. So that means the bamboo will regrow unless we spray it, so...
Then why don't we just fill the whole, we fill the whole thing, we don't spray, the bamboo stays dead.
We'll mow, we'll be able to mow.
Right, right, right.
We won't be able to mow the dip area. I mean, come on.
Well, with the ten, with the ten...
Is it gonna bring it up, though, to level?
Well, not, not level, but it'll make it mowable.
All right.
I think we should do the whole thing.
Let's just...
Do it right.
Lucky for you, I found eighteen thousand dollars to move into contingency, Janet.
Yeah, I saw that. But I might need that.
So, um...
Does it come back some way?
Okay.
So another question, I guess, we could spend seventeen fifty now, fill in the deep part, right?
No, 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 seventeen fifty is just an area, because it drops off pretty quick, you know, because they had, that was where the big bamboo, I mean, that big stand, very deep bamboo stand was right in the middle there. So the two ends are pretty good, it's in the middle, and even close, it's probably uneven five feet out.
So it's gonna happen if we don't fill it in, is the brush is gonna build up?
It's gonna come back.
Right.
And it has to be mowed.
Then it's pointless not to do the whole thing, so let's just go and get it done.
Okay, so, can I, we will have to do a...
I'll get a budget amendment for October's meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what I will do is I will just put this contractor on notice that...
We're gonna do it.
We can do it. And they couldn't do it right away anyway because they were super busy, so...
But, okay, but this is for yours, not Warren's.
Correct.
Okay, so what, no, it's for mine, it's for yours, I'm sorry.
It's for me.
Yeah, but it's not the water fund.
No, it's not.
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay.
No, it's not mine either.
I'm sorry.
But we are gonna have to have, the landscaper then is going to be involved because that part of mowing that area is not, it was the, the...
The one strip.
Yeah, the one strip was, like, that was gonna be more.
That was gonna move more.
Yeah, so I, I don't think it's gonna be that much. If anything, we'll probably just do it.
Just do it was a good answer.
I just have one more question, though, but if we're not gonna use the lot for anything, I mean, why?
It's just controlling the bamboo, because the bamboo is so invasive that it just, it will, it'll just keep coming back and then...
It can keep coming back. Even if you remove, I mean, you probably will have some roots that are still there, and they can repopulate.
But if we...
They'll be better.
Well, the thing is, is that's why you need to mow it.
Right, but it doesn't go past the grass area.
Right.
But in this case, like what we're doing at the well, Jesse is gonna spray once, because that's really all we can do.
Right.
But it will have to be maintained.
Mowed, right.
Mowed.
Right.
And then that's on the contract now, that part of the, so they're always supposed to maintain that whole side. They just fill, do it in the last...
But the removal of all that bamboo, they would take some of it out, Jesse would, and would come right back. So we took it all out, but we have to stay ahead of it now.
Yeah.
And Jesse's gonna, um, put the, whatever it is, the stuff down to prevent it from coming back, and then we're gonna do grass seed. But yeah, he'll be able to mow it once the grass seeds come back.
Okay. And if you do, if you plant grass now, it's gotta be the annual rye and then, like, yeah, and then the hay in the spring.
Annual rye. Well, I gotta find out when Jesse's gonna spray it.
So, so this is just to fill that in, that's not to plant the grass?
I'm, I'm gonna plant the grass. I already bought the grass. That was part of the original. And it's, it's an area that can be hand-seeded. It's not that big.
So what kind of seed are we talking about at the well?
Annual rye.
Annual rye.
Because that's what, that's what's gonna grow now.
All right, I'm gonna check with Jesse and see when he's gonna spray it or whatever he does, and, um...
Well, and I don't know how long you have to wait to plant the seed. And it's gotta get in before the middle of October.
All right, well, that's what I want to find out, if, when he's gonna spray it, and then I'll have a landscaper put the annual rye in.
That's where I believe.
We talked about this at the last meeting, I think, one of the attendees in the audience mentioned about when you get rid of bamboo and you dig it all up, you've got to go plastic down or something like that, they said.
No, 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 not if you mow it.
So you just have to mow it, that's it?
That's, you have to... Well, haven't you, didn't you notice it over here before? There was a grassy area that never, the bamboo never crossed because it's mowed.
Because it's mowed.
Well, and bamboo, as I just informed, is actually a grass. So, anyway.
Okay, so I gotta check with Jesse.
So can we, I guess, let's take, let's take a vote on going with option two?
I'll make a motion, we do option two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But you're not doing anything until it's got a budget amendment.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor, we will go with option two, which is the larger ten loads of, um, fill. Okay, four thousand dollars. Okay, thank you very much.
So that now we can do a budget amendment?
We'll do that at the October meeting. Yeah, I'll get one.
Phone system. As we all know, NCDIT is going away at the end of the year, which is the, who supplies our phone service right now to the administration building. And the police department, and the park, and the pool. So we had a meeting with Bun Communications, who basically set up our phone system that we have right now. And he came down here, Jesse came down, I'm sorry, Josh came down here, and was the owner of the company, spent at least an hour, an hour and a half with us last week, and...
No, it was this week.
Oh, that's right, this week, earlier this week, and provided us a quote. Basically, our monthly reoccurring charges. Now, NCDIT, currently, our phone bill is roughly two hundred and, I'm sure I can tap it with me. Two hundred and forty-seven dollars a month. With these new phones, the new phone system, and the new phones are basically their voice-over IP. And they also have, this would come, his, what he's recommending is it would come with phone apps, it would come with interconnected with your computer, so you could get faxes through your computer, emails, messages, voice messaging to text and all that stuff. It would be two hundred and seven dollars a month, so actually, it's less than that.
Two hundred and seven?
Yeah, but it's less than that because we're not doing, it would be one ninety-seven, and I'll get these numbers out to you. We also, and I just want to say that we also talked with Spectrum, who is our current internet provider. And this is basically voice-over in internet is what this is. They will provide a service, but the problem with Spectrum, number one, is service.
Yeah, let me tell you about that.
And well, and without getting into a lot of details, even when I was on the phone with them today, everything would be remote.
Yep.
We would have to do most of the setup.
Duh!
Yeah, they're terrible.
We would have to do a lot of the programming through their portal, as far as entering all this information. And any technical assistance would be remote through, you know, their service. And I know that their service has not been stellar, so...
And I can speak to that.
But now, Bun Communications does have a two thousand dollar setup and installation, but they're also going to remove our old phone system because we don't need that anymore. Right. They just don't work that way any longer. So it is a little more expensive to go with them, but I think in the long run, we've had a twenty-year, excuse me, ladies. Can we not have conversation? Thank you. We've had a long run with them as far as being our phone service provider. They've always come here when we needed them. They have people on site that have programmed the phones, have helped Lisa change things around, so...
What was Spectrum's cost, did you say?
I did not. Spectrum's cost, they really don't have a complete cost, although we've been speaking to them for two weeks, because they haven't come out here to physically look at anything.
And they won't.
They also, the amount of money that they're charging us is based on a thirty-six-month contract. So it's a three-year contract.
And if you want out early, you pay the remaining of the contract. It's buyout, where Bun does not have that.
Right.
If you decide after a month you don't want them, no problem.
They're, they also have license fees that we would have to pay every month, which is twenty dollars a line for Spectrum.
We have ten lines.
So that's two hundred dollars a month just there. There's also, the phones, the phones are not as robust as the phones that Bun is providing. Their quote was very hard to read. I would have had it all ready for you.
But you said Bun is a one ninety-seven a month, correct?
Yeah, a reoccurring charge of one ninety-seven, but we have to, we have to, yes, yes.
Okay, and it's two thousand dollars for them to remove our old phone system?
And set up.
One setup.
And set up.
And they also offered, they truly do believe that we may be able to get rid of one of our Spectrum...
Internet sites.
Thank you. Because right now, we have one here, we have one for the police station, we have one at the pool, and there, they were very, Bun was pretty positive that we could use one internet connection for these two locations.
So that would eliminate about, I don't have the bill in front of me.
A hundred and twenty-nine, depending on...
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-nine bucks a month.
So I don't mean to cut to the chase, but this kind of sounds like a laydown.
It is. I would like to think that we would like to go with Bun.
But plus, they're also a known entity to us.
Right.
Twenty years.
Yeah, yeah.
And another thing is that two thousand dollars setup, it's worth saving for months, and the difference would be less than four years.
Plus, not only that, if they're doing the setup and something's not right, they're gonna fix the setup. I mean, that's, because Lisa will jump off the roof if she has to do that stuff.
Well, and that's, well, we don't have the...
We'd have costs, you'd have costs.
We don't have the ability, because again, we'd have to go into the portal, you know, enter all the information and the extensions and, you know, what's going to voicemail, what's going to, you know, what lines are going to what extensions.
How much was the original Bun, isn't it like five thousand dollars? What, how much is the hardware? Isn't like five grand or something for the hardware?
No, the phones, the, um, hold on.
Yeah.
Let me just say, I spent about an hour on the phone with Spectrum because the Wi-Fi speed over at the police department is drastically lower than what we have here. So I called Spectrum, we did a speed test here and there today, told them what it was, and basically, this is their response. Well, do you have the Cisco device? I'm like, I don't know. Do we, I don't know.
Yeah.
You have to do, you have to do, perform a reboot on the modem and the router, you have to do this, and this, and this. I said, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, can't you send someone out here to do that? You installed it. No, no, you have to do all of that before we will even think about coming out. That's not the service we just wanted to know.
No, I'm just looking for total dot.
Okay, the setup and installation was two thousand for Bun Communications. The phones, for ten phones, it's two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And I thought, I think I gave this information to you, but maybe I didn't. And then, the point-to-point antenna, which I believe that they're talking about between these two locations, would be six hundred and fifty dollars.
No problem.
So, that's fifty-one hundred for the, for the hardware, basically, and the installation.
Okay.
Now, the phones, again, the phones at, his phones that he was suggesting are...
They sound good.
They, they, yes, they were fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't use the ones we have now.
So if you have the upfront cost, fifty-one hundred dollars, we've dealt with these people over the years, so they're a known entity, I think it's, you know, it's kind of no brainer.
It's slim, though.
What do we have to do now? It wasn't a budget for this, because we're being made to do this because of the...
We didn't know that this service was gonna be discontinued until, and the only people that informed us that this service was being discontinued
Was Bun.
Was Bun. NCDIT did not tell us, Spectrum didn't reach out to us, nobody did, so...
So what do you need from us today?
It's just that we would go with Bun Communications for the phone system.
I make a motion to go with Bun.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's another budget amendment that we will have to do, Mary.
So you'll take care of Colin Bun? Josh?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we want that budget amendment for the October meeting, or do we...
Yeah, because he, oh, and the other thing is, is I, Bun was going to do all the switch-overs for our phone numbers from NCDIT to this new system. When I asked Spectrum how the, how the phone numbers get transferred, we have to do it. So it's just...
And it would be seamless, he said. The same day they installed, our new phones would be installed. You wouldn't even notice that they had done it.
Okay, so we need a budget amendment for fifty-one hundred bucks if I told it up, right?
Um, no. Yeah, it would be, yes.
Two plus two point five plus six, fifty-one, right?
And it could be less than that, but yes.
The service starts at the first of the year.
We're losing, we can, we can cut off any time.
Well, okay, and then you're not gonna pay your NCDIT for the last couple of months of the year either.
Exactly, exactly.
All right.
And we may lose the Spectrum, we may be able to eliminate the Spectrum wire, too.
Right. That would be nice to be able to call him up and go, hey.
Are you cursing?
I didn't curse.
Okay, so we will go with Bun on that. That's that. Okay. I sent you out all an email about the West End Fire Department. We just got this information a couple of days ago. We've been working with West End for months and months, and we've been, we got, stood off for quite a while, Mary and I.
Months at least.
Where they would not provide a date for us to meet. So, what I, I did print off copies again.
Is that this one?
Yes.
We got it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah. You did that.
Okay. Everyone have that?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sure they're on my phone or something.
So, what we asked, after numerous meetings, what we asked the West End Fire Department was, they came back with an original quote of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And that is not even for twenty-four-seven coverage here of our Foxfire, our Foxfire station.
What happened to that?
Well, it never really happened, but let's just...
Okay, okay.
So, they are here, we don't even know when they're here because it's a little unpredictable, in, located here in Foxfire. Even though our contract said it was twenty-four-seven out of Foxfire. Okay. So we wanted to, obviously, what we budgeted was two hundred and fifty thousand with a twenty-five thousand dollar reserve for capital expenditures for fire equipment when it was approved by the county. And they said, basically, Eric said, well, no, we can't do that. And I said, well, how can we cut costs? One of the, one of the big, in this, what I did is I copied his response on the top half of this document, and I'll read it. It said, "One of the big takeaways," and this is Eric, Eric Stromberg, this is his terminology, "one of the big takeaways I took from our meeting was the village concerns about controlling costs. The past few years, between personnel, equipment, and apparatus costs, all have really been bonkers, so we can greatly appreciate this concern. One way we feel that we can address this, which would benefit both sides and something that has been discussed for several years, is to look at a longer-term contract. This would allow each of us to plan a little bit better and know the funding year to year during the term of the contract. Our proposal is a five-year contract, starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, which is this year, at two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, with a three percent increase each year. This would allow both of us to know the funding expectations year to year for the next five years. Payments should be quarterly, as they have been, and there would be no changes with respect to how funding is dispersed. It's just a longer-term contract." Now, there's a few things with this, with what he's saying. The thing is, is that we do not get detailed budgets for where they spent their money from, until it's almost two years old. The only time they give us their expenses, their audited expenses, is basically, it'll be in March of next year, or maybe October, or no, I'm sorry, December.
Their auditor doesn't do a very good job of getting things in on time, so it'll be, it'll be end of twenty-twenty-six.
It'll probably be December or January of twenty-twenty-six, before we even know what they spent this year. Even though they have all those numbers, they do not share that with us. West End Fire Department is a nonprofit, basically a non-government organization, NGO, and they are basically asking for two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And we are not comfortable with where that money is being spent, how that money is being spent, or if the money is even being spent, okay? They flat-out rejected the fact that we would hold the capital reserve, that that was not what they were going to do. But the county is expecting us to be reserving. Because when new fire truck or new piece of equipment is requested, the county has to approve that. And the county is expecting that we will pay twenty-five or twenty-three, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of that capital expenditure. But we've already, if, if West End Fire Department will not allow us to reserve the money, we've already given them the money, so it's, it's a, it's a black hole for capital expenses. And again, the county is expecting that we are going to be paying for twenty-five percent of this.
They objected to us reserving because, quite frankly, they want to use that additional funds for operational costs. One of the comments Eric said, made, was that no other interlocal does that. And I'm like, well, I really don't care. The county would be thrilled to have us reserved, because then, when you have a major purchase, Foxfire, they know we'll do it, we're in the game, we'll reserve it, and then when it needs to be paid, we'll write a check.
Mary, is West End, are they required to have a reserve, and could we, a portion of ours be set aside for that reserve?
No, I won't, I, I trust them to do that.
And ours be twenty-five of that?
No, I won't do that.
No, they're not required.
No.
They're not required.
Because the county, the county funds their, their capital expenditures. A big, a big portion of their capital expenditures. It's a very convoluted, the county is trying to pull them in to, this is your budget, and we'll base our, just like we do. This is your budget, and you determine a tax rate based on how much money you need to run your organization. They want the money, and they want to spend it any way they can regardless. So, I just did a little bit of math, and that's what this is, based on this five-year contract, which I do not, it would be unethical for us to enter into a multi-year contract when we have an election coming up. The majority of the council, um, will, will be, you know, three seats are up for election. So that I am not comfortable at all with this council strapping another council with a five-year expenditure, so...
When's this, the current contract?
September. It's our, we have a payment due at the end of this month.
So that's the last quarter we'll be paying for in the prior contract?
No, the contract ended on June thirtieth.
It's the first payment.
So, we, trust me, we went to the fire department in the middle of May, we started.
So we're paying, we're paying on the contract, it's not, there's no contract.
We're not paying anything. We have no contract right now.
So we're paying the quarterly?
We have no contract right now.
Well, we paid quarterly through the end of the contract.
Under the other contract.
Which was due earlier.
And now since we have no contract, we're not paying anything.
Well, we don't, we pay quarterly, and the end of the quarter is September thirtieth, so it's not here yet.
So we're gonna make that payment.
We don't know, I'm going to, unless we come to an agreement.
That's the thing is...
What we proposed, again, was two hundred and fifty thousand and a twenty-five thousand dollar reserve, and they flat-out rejected that.
Yeah, we had two hundred and eighty-two thousand in the budget, I guess, for, two hundred and eighty-two-three.
We have two and eighty-two-three, but thirty-two of that is to go for radios, where the county came to us last year and said, hey, this is an unfunded, federally mandated, unfunded requirement, and we stepped up and said, it's no problem, we'll be happy to pay our twenty-five percent.
So...
Can I have another thing without, or like, I don't want to...
Well, I, well, let me just, let me just hold on that. So, based on what they want, over the next five years, we, you know, in the three percent increase every year, next year would be three hundred and, basically, three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, and three hundred and thirty-two thousand by the end of year five, and we have no control over any expenses. It's one point five six six million dollars. So one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars over five years, which is an enormous amount of money to...
Yeah.
So, especially when we, when you look at what they, the last audited financials that I did see, they didn't spend, I think, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, we paid close to forty-four percent of their budgeted, of their spent money, forty-four percent of it came from us.
Yeah, and you have to, yeah.
We're worth twenty-five percent of their costs.
Right, and we've made that case before, and it's like, I mean, West End this year got, right, about six hundred and sixty, six hundred and seventy thousand, something like that. So if you take their two ninety-five number, that is forty-four percent over and above what the county's already given them, and we're only twenty-five percent of the cost. That just, mathematically, that just doesn't make sense.
Well, and, and if you do the math, two ninety-five is basically eight point six cents, so point zero eight of our tax base. Point zero eight-six of our tax base.
Yeah.
So eight, basically, eight and a half cents of every tax dollar we collect is going for fire protection. Which, coincidentally, is the county rate, that the county is charging people, which doesn't make sense.
So the service isn't out of line, that's correct?
No, it is out of line, because, no, it's, you're, you're...
That's what everybody else is paying in the county?
They understand then how they divvy up the funds.
No, the thing is, is that, remember, just like with us, we have a budget. Our budget comes up to a million dollars, even though it's close to a two million. Our budget comes up to a million dollars, even though it's low, closer to 2 million. We have to look at our tax base and say, what do we set our tax rate at to get our 2 million dollars? They're saying, I want, I want this much mon, I just want, what they're saying, what, basically, what they're doing, we would say, okay, I don't care what my budget is. I want to charge 50 cents per hundred, just because I want the money. Instead of basing, remember, it's gotta be, it's, instead of basing your tax rate on your expenses, they're just saying, I'm gonna make up a tax rate.
So, we made a proposal, and then what have we proposed?
We proposed.
250, 25.
Plus, plus 25,000 for reserve.
Right. For capital expenditure, reserve.
And they're holding the 25?
No.
We are, we are holding.
Okay, and collecting the, okay.
That's what they're saying to you.
If they were gonna hold it, I was gonna go, wait, whoa, whoa.
No, 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 no.
So anyway, what we're doing, and I'll hand it over to Mary as soon as I make this statement, we are escalating this situation to other members of the county, is, is what we're doing. And, because this is the, as I said, the county is expecting us to be reserving for capital expenditures.
You can't expect us to pay this much, and then turn around, they'll spend it, they have now, and then we say, in a year, we're gonna pay 3% more.
Right.
Whatever equipment they gotta buy.
Right.
We can't do that.
Plus, the county's gonna come to us and say, well, they're asking for a fire truck, which is a million dollars, and you owe us 250.
Right.
So, but we've already, they're, like I said.
We've already overpaid.
Right. So anyway, this is getting escalated to powers greater than us, and see where it goes. But there is no contract at this point.
When you say powers greater than us, is that an agency or individual?
No, no, it's, it'll, it'll go to the county.
You have, you have to understand that when the county changed the way fire departments were funded, it's a big shift. The county basically made the fire departments a lot more accountable and took much greater control over things like capital expenditures. I mean, the county, the fire departments used to have, like, a building fund and an apparatus, but they were all separate line items. And, you know, they were reserving money for a building over here, and there was no reason to do that. So the county streamlined. And so, they're still kind of working through that process. But when they take the money, if you look at the county's spending thing, I mean, it's, it's very detailed. They break out capital, they break it all out. And so, another problem we have is that the West End Fire Department accounts don't match the county accounts. So it's very difficult to see whether you have apples to apples or oranges to oranges. I mean, it's just very, very difficult. The other point I made to Janice this afternoon was that our contract specifically says that they will provide trained personnel 24 hours per day, seven days per week at Foxfire. And they've made a really big deal out of that every time you go into a contract. And, we know that they didn't provide that, that this year. They had some staffing challenges. And instead of coming to us and saying, hey, we're not able to provide what the contract says, they didn't say anything. And I, I'm not, not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but that's a matter of integrity to me, and I got a problem with that. So to down, to take us down $10,000 from the previous contract is not sufficient. And it really, it really does need to get straightened out with the county, because as Janice said, if we don't reserve and we give that money to the fire department, I will guarantee you that when that, well, it either will pay it twice, or it'll get worked into a contract. And I think we're much more responsible, I'm not saying the fire department's not responsible, but we're very responsible about our money. And if we say we're gonna reserve every year for, you know, their capital budget, we'll do it. And so when it comes our turn to pay, we'll be able to pay.
One other thing, a proposal that, and for our next budgets, I think what we should do in moving forward is have a, break out our property tax, like, we have 29 cents, correct?
Yeah.
That, point is, like, if, you know.
We'll do it by percentage?
Yeah, we'll say that 8 cents is going for fire protection, and 21 cents is going for, you know, adminis, you know, for everything else.
For our other departments, yeah.
Yeah. Because as this cost goes up, I think our residents need to understand that it's not our spending that's going up, because we do, we do a lot to control costs. It's, your taxes are going up because perhaps the fire department is, is where it is.
I think the most important thing we need to do is get them on board with, we're gonna reserve for capital-approved projects from the county. And I just, I mean, I, I really don't, I won't move on, I'm sorry, I, I will not move on that, because that, that's a protection for us. The second thing we need to do, and this is the, okay, this is the other thing. So they want, they took out this year that they'll provide 24/7 coverage out of this station.
They took it out.
They took it out, they asked to take it out. Now I have a big problem. When you have a service contract, there was always a deliverable. We are promising, I mean, that's just, that's how it is. And now, with that out, we have no leverage. I mean, maybe they'll be over there eight hours a day.
They might never be there.
Exactly, and we have no, there's no accountability. And we can't do that. I don't think, as a governing body using tax dollars, we can't do that. There has to be some specificity about what they're gonna provide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we, more to come on this. This'll be an item that we're, we're gonna try to get some more guidance from the county this week and next week, and at our next council meeting, we'll have an update to this, and we'll go from there, but.
So when the quarterly invoice comes due in September?
There's no quarterly invoice that comes due because there's no contract.
So, they don't want to provide a service?
Well, they do, they do provide service, it, it just won't be.
Well, why would they have to, well, with a part of the West End, they could probably just walk out.
We're still in West End's fire department, a fire district.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And that never changes.
So, we just expect service coming out of 211, or have this service out of this?
Well, and I would say I bet 70% of the time it comes out of 211.
Okay.
Well, remember too, that this station doesn't, doesn't just serve the incorporated limits of the village. It serves in the ETJ, however that district is. So, we just, I just, as the finance officer, I just cannot, I, I can't do this.
Any chance of just trying to negotiate with them for a contract extension for?
No, because it's a 305, and I ain't paying that.
Also, 305 must be a fourth of the 305,000.
Yeah, I'm not doing that. Well, I'm sorry, I won't support that, let me reph, let, let me rephrase.
So that's where we are right now, and there will be more to come on that. And if there's any major development that we can maybe feel better about, we might have to have a special meeting.
We're not looking to not do a contract with them, don't like, please don't walk out of here. But, but it has to be something that makes sense, it has to be something that's transparent, it has to be something that's enforceable, and the dollar's gotta be right.
Well, you mean, you know what I'm saying?
I'm surprised they haven't adopted, like you mentioned, the county has more specific line items, county line items.
They're working on it.
You would think they'd wanna adopt what the county has, just to make it easier to review the reports and stuff.
But the thing is, is that I think the confusion makes it easier for them to muddy the waters a little.
I hope that's not true, but it is a process, because the county's accounts are very different than Fox, than, than fire department accounts. And I don't know how they break it up.
So, okay, so that's the end of my update. Moving on to.
So do you have another meeting with them shortly, or is it just gonna?
No, I have to, I'm gonna have, be speaking with some county representatives tomorrow. Any other questions for me? Moving on, Councilman Norman.
Okay, so I spoke with the contractor. The anchors have been put in place, the inspection was done for the electrical. He's waiting on the full dead guy, the cement guy. And tomorrow, it looks like we're supposed to have a bunch of rain. He was supposed to be here tomorrow to recompact the area, redo, put in the stone, and redo the forms. If it rains, you can't do it. And if he had gotten that done tomorrow, he was going to lay the deck next week.
Well, it's supposed to be thunders, well, who knows what's gonna happen?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and again, you know, if you're planning that it's gonna rain, and I'm looking at the calendar, the weather report for next week, rain all, all next week. And you cannot pour the concrete if it's raining. So that's where we're at right now, and, you know, I just want everybody to understand, the village doesn't have any control over the contractor in terms of what work gets done and what doesn't get done. We can ask them what's going on, they do the scheduling, they work with the subcontractors. This is not our project. It is all up to the contractor. So we can get updates, but we did not, we are not in charge of this project, even though there are some people who think we are.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We've gotta get it done before winter, right? I mean, are we concerned that that's not gonna happen, or?
No, I'm not concerned that it's not gonna happen. No. It'll get done. That, as far as I'm concerned, will be open next year. Some hell or high wire.
Like, like the son of all.
If I have to take the contractor and, you know, it will, it will be open.
Any other questions? No? Moving on to Councilwoman Gilroy, I'll put you on there.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, let's talk about the, the length of property taxes. Zacchaeus sent me their paperwork, which was passed on to all of you. I read through the contract, it is pretty straightforward. I think we're gonna, we will co-plaintiff with the county. But, a couple things I want to point out. We've looked at, we talked about four lots, okay? We have four that really are actually collectible. One of them is a very small piece on Eagle Drive, it's only worth $4,000. I don't think that's worth foreclosing on.
Oh, why?
Because it's a little tiny strip of unbuildable. So, we'd have to recoup our costs, the attorney cost, and I don't know that it would sell.
You say Eagle, Eagle Drive?
Eagle Drive, can put a website on it?
No.
No?
Why not?
It's real long and real narrow. It's like attached, if you look it up on the GIS, it's this little strip of property that's on the edge of someone else's property.
Well, maybe, okay, so, maybe, a home, are there homes next to it?
Let me do that there.
What's the lot number?
Hang on, just one second, I'll tell you.
Because maybe one of the two property owners next to it will wanna buy it. Well, let's, let's not go there. I mean, when we, when you say we're going to co, we'll be co-collecting with the county, but that's not, but not all of these are county collectibles, right?
No, three, three of the four are. There are two that are already in foreclosure, and those are the two Lillian Schultz parcels.
Okay.
58 North Shamrock, which is property which the tax assessment is $30,000. Three Laurel Circle, tax assessment is $40,000. Between the two properties, they owe us $1,438, that's based on July, I haven't, I haven't seen.
What, what's the total for the two?
$1,438.
It's actually up to $1,452.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, yeah.
Seventy-two, so, $1,452. Okay.
Okay? So, to co-plaintiff with the county on those, I, I mean, for sure, it would be $1,000 to us for each parcel, because if you co-plaintiff with another entity, it's a thousand per. You have the attorney's fees, but I have no doubt that those lots would sell.
Okay, so here, here's my question though. If they sell, isn't the buyer responsible for the fees?
No, because here's, no.
Not up for closure, not up for closure?
Here's what happens. The county will set the opening bid price.
Okay.
Far enough above all the fees, all the taxes, and all that, and all that kinda thing.
Gotcha.
So, and those two properties, I would, it would be kinda silly for us, I think, not to pursue and co-plaintiff with the county.
And the, and the fees would include the fees we're paying to, to, yeah. Oh, okay, so they build it in.
So, so, so let's say that the county has fees of, you know, and taxes of $3,000, and we have fees and taxes of $3,000. Well, the opening bid is gonna be at least six grand, so that everything's, every entity is covered who's making a claim.
Okay, that, that's good, okay.
Okay? I will go back through the contract again, this, Zacchaeus is the largest foreclosure. I mean, and I'll tell you what, they're on it, man, you email them, that guy, he is, they're on it. I have no, and the county works with them exclusively.
Our attorney has worked with them on numerous occasions too.
So, I mean, I think in terms of having someone who will follow through and knows what they're doing, I don't think you would find anyone who's better. There is another parcel, and it's 00049592. It's nine Foxfire Boulevard, which is the corner property on Boba Link and Foxfire.
Oh, I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah, that also has a tax value of $30,000, or a tax assessment of $30,000. They don't owe the county. So we could pursue that one, and we would just add it as a third parcel, but there's.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, as I'm going east on Boba Link, I'm at the corner, is it the one on the right next to Sheila? Or is it the one on the left?
It's the one on the right.
It's the one on the right, which I think is not buildable.
Which I think is not buildable too, and that's something, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to dig in there. I've heard that before, because I think Sheila wanted to buy it.
Well, they owned it at one point, they sold it, and then someone else tried to come in and buy it.
Builder bought it.
Right, and then they found out.
And found out there was subject taken for those condos on the, on the lot side.
Right, it's not buildable. So, I, you can say it's worth 30, but it's, it's really worth nothing.
And we're gonna have to figure out how to, like, really verify that. I'm very good to go on the 58 North Shamrock and the Three Laurel Circle.
Right.
So you're saying though, this nine Foxfire Boulevard, they haven't paid their taxes?
Apparently, they paid them to the county, but they've not.
But not ours?
Yeah.
What do they owe us?
I gotta tell you, I'm a handy dandy stack.
I mean, I can't imagine anybody's gonna buy a lot if they can't build them.
Why? Of course, I've gotten home inspections too.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, let me find up here who was that. I think that's the golf course, hold on. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know where we are. I would like to get moving on the 58 North Shamrock and the Three Laurel Circle, because that's already filed by the county.
Okay. Do you know what the amounts that, that are owed to us on those, or no? Didn't you say $1,452?
Yeah.
Well, that's for one of them.
No, that's for both of them.
For both?
That's, that's $1,452 is for both of them, they combined them, that's the Schultzes, yeah. Yep.
Well, I'm making motions to pursue those two lots.
Well, and when we enter into this contract, how is it, how is it paid? I mean, how?
After the sale, yeah.
Oh, okay, so we do this all upfront?
It's just like a regular, no, it's just, it's just like a regular, and I'm gonna go back through and read the contract again. But I've run foreclo, I mean, I've been involved in foreclosure sales, and nobody pays anything.
Until it's all done. Right. Right, because how do you assess your, how do you assess your expenses?
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I can't imagine if they're, I mean, it's 58 North Shamrock, I'm trying to picture where that one is, I don't know if there's any marsh lamb running in front of it.
Somebody can always do mitigation, but.
But, yeah, I mean, if it's assessed at 30, it's gonna go more.
As tight as it is right now, somebody will figure out how to hold it.
Yeah, it'll, it'll go for more than the $700 bucks. All right, well, so I guess I'm gonna make a motion that we do pursue this collection.
And we would co-plaintiff with the county on these two, because the county's already in process.
Okay.
Okay?
And we're gonna do. So they get their money, we get our money, and? Well, it's cheaper, it's cheaper as we're co. If you do the co, okay.
Yeah, yep.
With Zaccharius Legal Services.
Okay. And Janice, you'll be the one who signs our con, who signs the contract with them, okay?
So how long have they been moving this for that?
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I made the motion, you start it, I'll second it.
Well, that was a long time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None being, we can enter into this contract to collect. Both of those?
Yeah.
It's only on those two lots, it's not like a retainer will be using it again? So if you second contract, we?
No, it's, it's a, it's a, I believe it's a contract, I don't think they list the property, we're.
On board.
It would be ongoing, yeah, I understand it.
Yeah, we, we are actually signing a contract with them the last two years. Just remember, you have an upset bid process, and Gary Briggs at the county told me, this goes on and on, because every 10 days, somebody can upset, they can upset it by 50 bucks, and you're back in the cycle, so it takes a while.
So, can you read the motion again?
So, don't they put a time limit on it though? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Okay.
I don't know how long it goes for, but, but it, I mean, it's not like you get your money next week.
No, no, I know that. But is it like, you get two months, then it's out there listed?
No, it goes longer than that.
Does it?
Oh, yeah, yep.
No, there's a whole legal process when you do a foreclosure. And that's what, you know, that's what they do.
That's what they're doing, that's what they do, yeah.
And we've, we've done those before on other pieces of property here.
Okay.
And have collected our money.
The other thing you need to remember is this, there is no way for us to clear real per, real property taxes, none.
Right.
They're on our books forever, okay? Once we get this under wraps, I'll go in and do the research on how to do an insolvency list, which we can do to clear personal property tax. You know, the guy who owes us ten fifty for the boat, you know, or the gal who owes us whatever. But there's no way to clear real property taxes. You're, we can't collect them, and remember, we can only go back ten years too, so. And Schultz's properties actually don't go to, didn't start going to Lincoln until twenty nineteen, so we can collect everything.
Okay, so the motion I'm making is that we enter into a contract, um, for a tax foreclosure attorney with the Zacarias Legal Services.
Two-year agreement, correct?
Yeah, says it spelled out in my contract.
So it's not, I think, the motion that Dawn made was for action against those two properties. But it's not, it's really for the contract, a two-year contract.
Warren's got a good point, because if we decided to then foreclose on nine Foxfire, we would add it.
On something else, you mean?
Right, I mean, this is, this is someone we're retaining.
Right, right, that's a point I wanted to make.
This is a retention contract.
Yeah, yeah.
For, um, for a foreclosure.
Right, two-year, yes, two-year agreement.
So that's what we're, that's what this motion is for?
Yes.
Okay.
It's to sign this retention agreement.
All right, so, you, we need to make a motion, because yours was to foreclose on the lot.
No, it's to, uh, yes.
So we need to make a motion to accept the retention.
That's what I think I just did, but I'll do it again.
Okay.
I think you're okay.
Sorry, I'm gonna make a motion. That we enter into a retainer contract with Zacarias Legal Services for tax foreclosure.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do we need to make, oh, sorry.
Nope.
A motion on yours?
No, no, because we accepted this.
No, 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 oh, okay, but.
So she can, she can start the process now without?
It doesn't, we're not, we're not saying for X property or Y property.
So we don't have to vote on that?
No.
She can do that now.
What, so we need a motion now to pursue, to co-plaintiff with the county.
Right.
For fifty-eight North Shamrock and three Laurel Circle.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we gotta.
Opposed? Okay, none being.
Took us a while.
Let's talk about something easier. I want you to know is, um, I don't, I didn't, I don't think we're gonna approve them tonight, Lisa doesn't really like us to approve them at the work session, but.
Right.
I don't, you guys have gotta tell me how you think about this, but I'd like you to know what we're moving around and why we're moving it. I, I, I think.
Well, we have to, I think we have to, yeah.
But a lot of times, when we go, and they just go on the consent agenda, we don't really.
No, I, I prefer this.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that too. So the first thing we did, sorry Janet, when we did the budget, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars for pool, um, pool salaries for twenty-five, twenty-six, which at the time made total sense. But, because we weren't able to open the pool for June and July, it leaves us some extra cash in there, so I wanna take eighteen thousand.
What did I have in there, thirty?
Thirty, we'll leave, leave twelve to cover June of next year.
Okay, so, I, I, I have to interrupt. Okay, because, and the reason I'm gonna debate this eighteen, we're gonna leave, what'd you say, twelve? All right. With the cement. What's gonna happen is we are going to have another charge because of the fact that he was supposed to be pouring the cement in March. So now he has to recompact all of, around the pool. He has to, and then first lay the gravel or the rock, recompare and redo the forms. That was not in his original contract, so there's gonna be an additional fee for that.
Yeah, but, but here's the thing.
Do we know what the total cost will be now?
I have a candidate.
Remember, I think it would be better for us to take that as a general fund appropriation, because it's.
It is, because if it's.
Because remember, we said at the close of last fiscal, because all the pool work wasn't done, we didn't budget anything, we just all agreed that when it comes in. You know, obviously, we didn't spend all the money we did this year.
Right.
We'll take it as a fund appropriation, and that's what I would do with his additional charge, it's just cleaner.
Okay, okay.
And I believe there was, there was some overage, we budgeted a little bit more than what we originally anticipated due to overage cost.
Okay, and that's fine, as long as you understand.
Yeah, no, it, because we figured there would be some overruns anyway. I mean, with a three hundred thousand dollar contract, you would expect to have some changes, so just, we'll just make it a fund appropriation.
Okay, as long as we can do that. Because I know there will be.
Yep.
It's cleaner that way.
But rather than wait to the end, do you wanna?
No, we'll wait for the end, I am.
No, no, we'll wait until we get the bill.
No, yeah, yeah.
The, the invoice.
Yep.
Right, until the pot's empty, that's.
Right, yeah.
Yep, okay, so what we'll do is we'll increase contingency by eighteen thousand and decrease pool salaries by eighteen thousand.
Okay, I don't have a problem.
Yep, and then, on the pickleball, um, I was gonna find money in your budget someplace, but you didn't have any.
No, because I think we only budgeted a thousand dollars for the, uh, for the ball.
So then, we'll increase pickleball maintenance by two thousand and decrease contingency by two thousand, because you're already over, and we got the ceiling, and you want one more camera over there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's how I'm gonna do it. So we'll bring these up, I'll have Lisa formalize them.
So does this increase include the six fifty for the ceiling?
Six seventy-five plus what you're already over, which is eight hundred and twenty-three, or something like that, plus an extra camera, so I think it'd be all right.
How much did you give me for an extra, well, we have the camera, it would be having to bring the electrician in to put in the, like.
You probably got a three fifty.
I don't think he'll charge us that much.
Good.
At least he never knows.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll now put those on the consent agenda, okay? Um, just like the other ones will do with the fill for the bamboo, and also with the phone system. Those all now go on the consent agenda for the October meeting, correct?
Okay.
All right, good, okay. All right, then let's talk about something fun. Okay, I'm gonna meet with the, the FPOA trio, who's working on the, um, tree lighting on the first of October. My impression is, and I wanna just confirm that with you guys, that we're coming alongside to help, not coming alongside to take over, correct?
Correct, okay.
So if you have any ideas or something like that, that you think would make, I didn't go last year, but they had to work, and so by the time I got there, it was done. So if you have any ideas that you want me to take with them, you need to send them to me, okay? And then, the FPOA is having to clean out the storage that they had at the golf club. All right? Like, tons of decorations. They have a lot of Christmas decorations that pretty much they're kinda looking to get rid of, so I wouldn't overlook that, I mean, it's nice stuff. And I talked to Lisa today, she said, we don't have, really have any Christmas decorations. So, they've offered some of it to us, which is fine, if you wanna take a little bit of it. Unless there's an issue with us taking it. But I don't, I just think there would be, I mean, there's.
You should ask Lisa about that.
Well, I talked to her about it, and she didn't go, no, we can't do that.
I don't think so, but, where are you gonna put it?
Storage might be a problem.
I'll let Lisa figure that out.
Oh, no. Where would you put it?
We're not gonna get anything big. I'm more, yeah, we're not gonna get any, I mean, the wreaths like this, some garland, and a tree like this, yeah.
Okay, so again, where are you gonna put it?
I'll find a place to put it. Put it in my house, I don't care, I mean, there's not, we're not gonna take a lot. And then I told the lady, um, it was Jen Gunn, I said, hey, whatever is left over, maybe we just do a no-cost raffle at the tree lighting, and let, you know, people take something.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, there you go, you know, it gets hard, you get to pick some.
Exactly, and there's no cost, there's no, and then they don't have to worry about getting rid of it, and we'll be done, so. You guys are good with that, if you've got ideas, let me know.
Okay.
Another question I have, with, the FPOA, they incur cost during that event. Uh, is the village gonna participate?
Yeah, we said we would.
We have a dollar number that we're gonna commit to that?
I'll, we'll, I'll find it in admin someplace, but I can't, I mean.
Well, I know everybody brings cookies.
Don't we, don't we want to?
We didn't plan on, we didn't plan on, on, you know, a few hundred dollars, I think is what we.
I was gonna say, I, I thought that's all it was. I don't even think, yeah, that's a bull.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like we're buying dinner for everybody, you know?
Right, all of, yeah, a lot of their, uh, members bring cookies, and they have hot chocolate, um, coffee, tea.
Yeah, I got a couple of ideas.
And, uh, those are there.
Anybody know how many people were there last year?
Yeah, there was, there was probably about. Well, there were a lot of kids too, um, maybe, maybe forty.
Oh, that's not that many, no. Okay, all right.
And then while we're on the FPOA. I notice that the number of flags in the village, they keep increasing, the, you know, the stars are at the end of there. And, I understand those come from donations to the FPOA.
It's not the FPOA, it's a company.
No, it's, yeah, it's Mark and Sally Cunliffe, and then there's a couple other people, and I think Mark and Sally store all the flags in their house, in their garage.
In fact, the only reason I'm bringing this up, because we are FPOA, it's kinda like community stuff. But is that something maybe we want to help with the cost of, of flags, or replacing flags, or, or additional flags for the village? It seems if it is just a couple private individuals doing it, if we could help mom, maybe that's something might be.
I think people donate.
They did donate money to buy those flags.
Yeah.
That, that's a good point, though.
I think we need to add that as a.
Yeah, we can talk to Sally and see.
She'd know, she'd know what they need.
Yeah, well, Sally and Mark.
Well, I've, yeah.
Yeah, they're the ones that put them up and take them down, and I think a couple other people helped them. Um, and you know what, I talked to them again this year, they do a fabulous job, and I'm really.
Yeah, they do.
It's great that they put them up, they take them down, it's a lot of work, and, uh, it makes our village look great as people are driving through, so. I applaud them for doing it every year, and I thank them.
If the council can help moderately, financially, maybe that's something, like Mary said, we'll put on a, a future agenda, maybe.
Future budget, maybe.
No, I think, I think as the need comes up, I mean, it's not something we have to budget for, but I think as the need comes up, they should feel free to, you know, make a request, and then we can.
Okay.
Talk about it.
See if we can do it.
Very good.
I'm done.
Okay.
Warren?
This is real quick.
Council, Council.
The cross connection control ordinance, uh, the last work session, we went over, talked about it, it was, um, four or five pages. Mary was gracious enough to help me out, and, uh, she, uh, we got it down, we streamlined it, and, uh, she, she got it down to two pages.
You'll never guess what I read it through.
And so, uh, I've given it to, to Lisa, and Lisa's got it, there, there's a format, in order to fit into the current ordinance format, that she's gonna have to put through. Hopefully, it's done by the next meeting, and we take a vote.
Well, I think we need to.
I looked through it, so.
Look it over, yeah.
Look it over, right, but, well, you had this, this, actually, not this one.
No, I like.
Except for the day, but the other ordinances, this is just streamlined, what was in the other ordinance. We've been doing this almost now for a year, so it'd be nice to put this to the.
I'd like to have some time to read it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, are there things that, if, if we adopt this in our ordinances, are there things that have to be removed or changed in our ordinances, or just an addition?
No, this is an addition to.
A complete addition, okay.
So we don't have anything in there now about backfill?
Uh, there's, there is something in there, yeah, it's, it's, um, very generic.
Do we, do we need to delete that part that's there now?
Uh, it probably will, will.
Okay.
So we don't have, so we don't have any conflicting language?
Right, no, there won't be any conflicting language.
So you'll have to go through the ordinance that we have now?
Yes, it's, yes, it's not.
We could just do a whole.
Yeah, it's not a very complete ordinance.
Well, unless somebody, unless it's part, I don't know, it depends, it could be just a delete and replace, or it could be a change.
I'll figure it out.
Right.
And the, the thing about this ordinance, the new ordinance, the way it's written, is that, um, it'll refer to, um, our website, and there'll be specific, um, uh, items. Like, if someone has a question about, um, who needs backfill, somebody will address that, address, so, but this is, uh. I think we'll, we'll deal with it wrapping up next week, or next week.
Yeah, great. Make sure everybody reads this and gives their comments to Lisa and Warren both.
And you need to go and take this and look and put it up against.
It's the old one, yeah.
Because we didn't spend a whole lot of time on that thing.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
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 Spare time.
That's what I got.
All right. Moving on now, to public comment period. And I'll just remind people that this is public comment for items that were discussed or listed on this agenda. It's not meant for back and forth conversation, so if anyone has any questions or comments, please, um, approach the. And, uh, state your name and address.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. My name is Nina Sodano. I live at Eight Foxtail Lane, I've been there twenty years. Um, and I just wanna say two things that pertain to the pool and the pickleball courts. I think it's wonderful. The pool has been awesome. I use it all the time, my grandchildren or grandchild, my little one doesn't go yet, but, uh, every summer, we used it. It's been a great, uh, community experience. We've, we've met neighbors, we, and now that we have so many more families in the area. I have to say, I was so disappointed. We, we missed out last year. And then, to think that we were gonna have a pool this year, and it didn't happen. Very disappointing. And I know some people that I've talked to, uh, actually bought a home here, thinking they were gonna have a community pool. And, uh, there's, so, you know, uh, I feel bad for the children, uh, that didn't have it this year. And one of the things, I know you said, um, Janet, about March was supposed to be cement.
If you could direct your comments to me, I'm sorry, I didn't give you that detail.
Yeah, the cement was supposed to be done in March, and here we are, almost October, and it hasn't been done. And, that just befuddles my mind, why that had it happen. Also, when you have a contract like that, a big contract with a company, isn't there in the contract a finishing date? Especially on a pool that you can only use in the summer? That's what I don't understand. So I'm just putting that forward. Why, wouldn't there have been, if it's not in there, why wasn't there a finishing contract date? That they would've been responsible for to get that done, so that we could've had a pool this year? The other thing with the pickleball courts, again, my husband and I go by it all the time, and we love, we stop, we talk to people. We love seeing, uh, that group, and enjoying, and even children. What I have a problem with is, it's only how old, two years, can you tell me how long it's been there?
Four.
Four.
Is it four years already?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, uh, we, we look at that fencing that was put up, and I mean, it's been pretty, you know, a brand-new fence around the pickleball court, and from the very beginning, it was not good. I mean, and you look at it, it's in pretty rough shape. And I just feel for something that's fairly new, it should not look like that. Or, I mean, I have, I know people say they have to lift up the top of it, because it's all bent over. The gates don't line up, so I'm just airing, you know? And, and it doesn't look nice for our community either, the way that fence looks, and it's not looking properly. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No.
The one, the one, um, I will factually address one thing that you brought up, which was the, why wasn't there dates to completion. Um, if this were an indoor pool, it would have made a difference, um, and you could have probably put some kind of completion estimation on it, but being outdoors, you're subject to weather conditions, um, and that was, that was the biggest problem, because it was extremely rainy, um, for most of the spring, and we're not the only contract, and it's all over the state that it was very rainy, so these people are working through their schedules, and weather, weather played a big part. So, that was, that was one of the biggest problems. And then, once you get out of the schedule, um,
You're out.